Alamance County is pleased to present the Alamance County Commissioners' Meet.
Good evening, and I would like to welcome everyone to the October 16th meeting of Alamance County Commissioners. And before we begin, I'd like for Commissioner Sutton, if you would, do our invocation, please.
If we could take a moment, please. My heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to exercise one of the greatest privileges we have in this country: self-governance. Be with us as we enter into tonight's deliberations. Be with us for all future deliberations, especially going into a new season with fall. Please help us realize that we all need to enter into some thoughts of a new season in our hearts, in our minds, and in our daily dealings in our professional and personal lives. Amen.
That's good to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we will have our public speakers. And just want to remind everyone, if you can limit it to three minutes, that would be appreciated. First, Leah Clayton.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I will be brief. I ask you to open your hearts and your minds to my rational and moral request. We, as a community, need to move the Confederate statue from in front of our courthouse. I believe that it is unfair to the black citizens of Alamance County to have it there. I believe that it does harm to black people in our community, and it does harm to white people, too. I believe it has no place in front of a House of Government justice because it does not represent the interests and well-being of all of our citizens. I propose that we move the monument to a more fair location that allows it to be in its proper historical context. The statue was erected in 1914 in a time when black citizens were losing the right to vote, and Jim Crow laws were enacted to deprive them of basic civil rights. Also during this time, an increase in lynchings and the rise of the KKK. All done to bolster white power and keep black people in an economically and socially disadvantaged place. It was during these years that this monument was erected. Today, I believe, having a statue in front of our courthouse that glorifies a soldier who fought to preserve the legality of enslaving an entire group of people because they were deemed to be less than human, this negates the proposition that the American justice system treats everyone equally under the law. Many argue that the Confederate statue honors their personal family history. It is also important to consider that this history has also served to exploit, exclude, and depress black people. In this matter, and in all decisions made on behalf of the public, the history of black people as a community should be valued as much as the history of other white community members who stand here to speak before you to defend the statue. When we deny or are complacent about the harmful nature of this statue and its location, we deny the real pain of this history for Americans of color. My own innate sense of decency tells me that the moral thing to do is to move it. Isn't this kindness, this kind of kindness and true concern for everyone, a real southern value that we all share? Thank you.
All right. Melissa Peterson.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me again. I'll try to make this brief. I brought a real short PowerPoint so I could stay on case. So I'm gonna present that. But my name is Melissa Peterson, and I'm with the Alamance Academy. Some of our members came along tonight. But we provide, we would like to provide integrated community services for Alamance County. And we were established in 2007. A lot of you guys may know about. We were established as a Level Two group home for boys. And over the past decade, we include services that provide holistic rehabilitation services here in Alamance County and 36 other counties that we're certified to work in. We also employ over 50 people in the county, too, and we're growing that. We strive to provide an enriching environment that promotes healthier relationships with the community, increase the chances of independent living for our consumers and members. We offer residential services, mental health assessments, individual support services, SEOP, which is substance abuse outpatient services. We do outpatient therapy, also trauma-focused therapy. We do peer support services, individual support services. We help with housing, employment, linkage, and we also do services for the blind. We just became a vendor to do that. And we just kind of show some pictures of some of the families that we have impacted through some of our peer support services. We've helped people that are homeless find housing, link them into job opportunities, and different things like that. We want to expand those impacts here in Alamance County. And so those are some of the visions that we have at the Community Services of Alamance County, that we want to help with housing, food, nutrition, employment, health, and education. And also link in with other nonprofits to help support those things. And we feel that just one large site, because right now we're spread out in a lot of different places, that would enhance the services that we're able to provide for the community, too, and also help with employment and job opportunities for people and training. And so we want to boost effectiveness of each partner's organizations or nonprofits and collaborate, which would be a real benefit for all the citizens of Alamance. And that's what we want, you know, we're just kind of making that vision come true, like realizing the clinic, reviving the clinic. We want to revive the clinic.
Take it ahead, right?
We want to revive it. Yeah. So that's about the end of it. And I appreciate the time and the consideration of the board.
We will talk about that later, too.
Okay.
So we may have some questions for you then.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, Delacy Jacobs.
Yes, my name is Delacy Jacobs, and I am a peer support with Alamance Academy. We reach out and do many things for our individuals and the community. Like Melissa stated, we have to find jobs, housing, food, clothing. We do all the above because we want them to have a good impact not on themselves, but Alamance County. With a little boost, a little shove, they can do it. They just need that little push. They can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara, not sure, Saul, maybe?
Did you say her name?
Barbara.
It's not her, is it?
There's a Barbara clap. All Barbers, stand up.
I was telling them I didn't know what I was signing out there. I'm gonna stop signing my name.
You get a bill later.
But anyway, I'm Barbara. I work at Alamance Academy. I'm one of the peer support supervisors. We're looking to get a bigger place, like Mo was saying, so we can be all in one facility and expand our business. We hoping, look forward to getting that building.
Very good. Thank you. Barry Joyce.
Showing how old you are, Barry.
Huh?
Showing how old you are.
Yeah, me and you about getting there. We on the other side of 12 o'clock.
That's right.
You know, I'm here to talk about a couple of things. One, this statue thing. I just have heard a bunch about it. I think we could remedy this all by putting something in front of the statue saying, "This is so we never forget." And then that makes everybody happy, you know, because that really should be a reminder of that atrocity, and it should be put out there so we never forget what happened. But anyway, basically what I'm here for is try to save some people's lives in Alamance County. You're gonna have the EMS director come up here in a few minutes and offer an agenda to purchase three of these Lucas machines, which are CPR compression machines. We only have like two or three now. So basically, what it boils to is some people in the county have a better chance of living than others. And my understanding is the protocol for CPR in this county is volunteer fire departments do the CPR. And they do CPR until the ambulance gets there. And then they continue to do CPR after the ambulance gets there so that the paramedics can go ahead and start administering fluids, whatever, to try to save a person's life. The Lucas machine is way, way more efficient than mandatory compressions. Pumps a lot more blood to the heart, a lot more oxygen. It's just a lot better chance of survival. We've had them, I think they're scattered out now. And we don't have one at our, at AO Fire Department. I mean faucet, but the odds of him getting there, you know, in time is not good. And, you know, the only way he's gonna beat the EMTs there is for him to just happen to be riding by and the call come in. It's a $18,000, $20,000 piece of equipment. We need one to have a fire department. Doesn't need to be paid for by the fire department. Needs to be paid for by the system in Alamance County. And, you know, I just want everybody in this county to have an equal chance of living. And if you pick and choose which fire departments have them or which, you know, EMS people have them, then you're basically saying, you know, you got a better chance if you live in this fire district than you do in this fire district. It's not a big expenditure for what we're doing. And it's one of the most effective things out there for saving lives. So I'd just like to ask, I know they asked them for three, it's on the agenda. I'd just like to ask that we buy enough for each fire department. I've talked to the firemen. They'd love to have them. Their success rate would be, would go up. I've got a fireman that mows for me, two firemen that mow for me, one in McLeanville and one in Alamance County. So I'm getting, hearing from both sides, Guilford and Alamance. And in Guilford, they have them. And the guy that works for, one of the guy works for me, works in Bebin, and, you know, he's done a lot of CPR with not much success. And, you know, it bothers him, and, you know, he feels like we need it. And the other fireman I've talked to feel like we need it. And, you know, I would just like to see the county. I think it'd be a good expenditure. I think the public citizens. I know I couldn't lay down at night wondering, you know, should I approve this or not approve it, you know, if I'm gonna save a life and not save a life. So I'd ask that you really consider that. I think it'd be one of the best expenditures you'd probably ever make in this county. And I appreciate your time, and I'm gonna crawl back to the seat and get off his leg.
Thank you, Chair. Bob Creighton.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. I want to address the Commissioners tonight on Cardinal Innovations Oversight faith that affects approximately 35,000 Alamance residents. When, if at all, that day of reckoning comes depends essentially on whether the State Health Secretary, Dr. Mandy Cohen, is willing to assert her oversight authority by state law. Only the Cardinal Board and the State Health Secretary have the ability to replace the CEO as Cardinal's chief executive. Two recent scathing state audits have questioned Cardinal's financial status, in particular Board of Executive Compensation and severance packages. We would not expect the State Health Secretary to take such action without some type of transition period that would allow the county to make arrangements for services. In any case, we should take whatever actions necessary to ensure services are continued for our county residents having a contingency plan, just in case. A former board member and several behavioral health advocates are calling for Dr. Cohen to remove all Cardinal Board members who are failing to provide strong oversight and undermining taxpayers with misaligned priorities. In June of 2016, the McCordia administration submitted a hybrid reform plan that allows a role for up to three commercial insurers providing prepaid health plans statewide and not for proper health groups supporting up to 12 regional provider entities. And Cohen Health has already been approved as one PLE. And Alamance alone, Cardinal is directly responsible for supporting a provider network that has provided thousands of walk-in services that could have otherwise gone to local emergency rooms. And I'm more than, I'm not sure of the count, but our people are the ones who suffer the lack of honest, caring leadership in mental health agencies and state administration in our legislature, who is only now raising an eyebrow at the amazing thing that has happened with public dollars recently. And some of the words that have been used by lawmakers include irresponsible, unbelievable, exorbitant, arrogant, greedy, egregious, avarice, and uncomfortable to describe the spending at North Carolina's largest behavioral health management company during a legislative hearing Tuesday. And that's all I wanted to bring to your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob, for bringing that up. All right. Commissioner responses. Do you need to comment?
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of comments. First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Clayton for speaking as she did in support of moving the monument. At the September 5th meeting, I spoke on, made a lot of points that were similar to Ms. Clayton's, the fact that this was an error of Jim Crow when our monument was erected. I mentioned that our Governor, Governor Acock, who was elected in 1900, made some pretty white supremacist remarks publicly. I mentioned the, some of the white supremacist remarks that were made at the dedication of our own monument, at the dedication of the Silent Sam monument. So I understand where Ms. Clayton is coming from, and I agree with her. This past Thursday, my wife and I attended an exhibit at the North Carolina, I forget the exact name, the Museum of Natural Sciences, I think it is, in downtown Raleigh. The exhibit was entitled "Race." And it's been there for a couple of months. It's, I think there are three of these exhibits traveling around the country. And the one in Raleigh will be there through this coming Sunday, the 22nd. And I would invite everybody to go see that because it really exhibits and displays some history that, and some facts about race and racism that a lot of us really aren't cognizant about. Then Friday and Saturday, I spent two full days at a workshop on racial equity and racism. This was the third time that this workshop has come to Alamance County, and I've attended each one. The first time was about a year and a half ago, and it was brought through a grant through our own Public Health Department. And the workshop is put on by an organization out of Greensboro called the Racial Equity Institute. And it's two full days of intense history and how racism manifests itself. And when I talk about racism, I'm not really talking about specific behaviors or attitudes of individuals necessarily, but really the racism as it has existed throughout the history of our country, and even before the country was started, how it's just been systemic. It's been systematized in our culture and in our laws. And I don't want to go, I don't really have time to go into it right now, but to say that I think that the monument is part of that history of systemic racism. And so I would invite this board, I know that there are other boards that have gone through this training. I know Commissioners from Chatham County, from Wake County, from Orange County, from Durham County, even some in Guilford County who have gone through this. This Racial Equity Institute, you can go to their website. It's RacialEquityInstitute.org and learn more about the group. But they're invited to work with organizations and communities throughout the country. They just happen to be located in Greensboro. But they're very effective in opening up eyes and introducing a little bit different perspective about the whole subject of racism. There are gonna be four more of these trainings in 2018 in Alamance County. And the places have yet to be determined, but, and they're limited to 40 people for each session. And they try to make sure that there's close to 50% people of color in the sessions. But they're gonna happen in January, and April, and August, and November of 2018. And I'd invite everybody to go. Once you go to one, you're invited to go back. There is a cost, but there are also scholarships available. But I just think it's very valuable. So I'd like to respond to Mr. Creighton, Bob Creighton, who spoke last on the Cardinal Innovations Healthcare because last week I attended the, their Community Operations Board meeting for the five counties around us, the orange, who do you see? Orange Person, Chatham, plus Alamance and Caswell. And the issue of that, of the audits were brought up at our meeting. Not a whole lot to be said because it's under litigation now through the judicial system. But they're committed to continuing to provide services. The issue about the CEO or the agency spending unreasonable or exorbitant, as some would say, funds on the CEO and other management people there. They do point out that they really have two buckets of money to spend. One is for administrative purposes, and that's limited to 8% of the total budget. And one is for providing actual services to our population. So that's 93%. And even if you reduce the administrative funding, that, the money that you reduce that by can't be used for the clinical services side. So I think, I feel comfortable that while this is being adjudicated that our citizens in Alamance County are going to get the services that they need. But we'll have to see how that case comes out. And let's see, I think we're gonna talk about more about the eligibility, so I won't respond to Ms. Peterson. So I appreciate, Gary, I didn't quite catch your last name.
Joyce.
Pardon?
Barry Joyce.
Joyce, Mr. Joyce, I appreciate your comments both on the statue and also on the Lucas machines. Being a former healthcare executive, I know what a difference that technology can make in saving lives. And so maybe that's something we can delve into. I don't know if we can take action tonight, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay.
No, I don't need to say anything.
Some days it's better.
That's right. Some things is best left unseated.
I've heard about the Lucas machines from other volunteer fire department chiefs, and I know, I agree that that's an important issue, important consideration. And I am just really excited to see what happens with the sale of the Cronot building tonight. And whatever happens, I'm delighted to have had the opportunity to get to know more about the Alamance Academy. And your work is so impressive. And glad to hear about it. Thank you for coming out.
All right. With that, we will move on, and I'll ask for approval of our agenda for the evening.
So moved.
Thank you, Bill.
Yep. Second.
Thank you, Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda, is there anything on there that you guys would like to pull out?
I move approval on the consent agenda.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Bob.
Second.
Thank you. Amy, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we're gonna open the floor up for a public hearing on the radio financing project. You'll bring us up to date on that now?
Good evening, Commissioners. On September 18th, County Manager Brian Haygood presented an upcoming concern about the Emergency Services radio replacement project. So on September 27th, the Finance Department issued a request for proposal for the financing of this project. We requested financing of $3,019,810.10 to have options for five, six, and seven-year terms. The bids were opened on October 10th at 2:00 PM. We had three banks that responded to the request for proposal, and those requests, I'm sorry, those results were included in your packet. We received a bid from First Bank, BBNT, and Pinnacle. Looking at the bid results, BBNT came in with the lowest percentage rate of 2.16%, and we would want to go for the life of the radios for seven years. What that will do is it will cover the cost of that life and then be ready for us, too, at the end of those seven years, to look at an additional purchase through the state contract. These radios are gonna be purchased off the state contract through Motorola. And at this time, I would ask the board to enter into the public hearing, and then we'll have a couple of items to approve afterwards.
Okay. I'm curious about the interest rate. You said it was 2 what?
2.16%.
What would, you know, just roughly 10 years ago, maybe the same offer, what would that have brought? would that have brought?
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Sutton, that was at about 4.5%.
Double, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So the interest rate, we have seen those come down. We're also not having to borrow quite as much for this time, because we are not purchasing radios for all of the fire departments, just for three, I believe, EMMHolt, Northeast Alamance, and Snow Camp. And I provided in your packet what their cost annually would be reimbursing the county.
Right. And I don't know if we want to read those or whatever.
So I have a question. There's, when we decide on a capital purchase like this, in my education, it's always two decisions, and they're not dependent on one another, they're kind of mutually exclusive decisions. One is the decision to make the purchase to begin with, and so I guess this is a real need that you've determined, that you've budgeted for and all. And then the second decision, how to pay for it or how to finance it. And so there's, there's choices. I mean, we could take it out of fund balance.
That's correct.
And save the 2.16% interest. But then there's, and really, on just a pure financial basis, if that 2.16% is less than what we value the cost of capital for this organization, so in other words, if we could make 5% on that fund balance, it would be better to finance it, but if we're only making 1% on the fund balance, maybe we ought to pay for it.
Exactly. And the way that we budgeted for this, this current year was, it was involved in our budget retreat. We addressed the need for purchasing radios, and we currently have in our budget $400,000 for that expense. Our first debt service payment would not happen until April, and that would be for $232,642, and I believe 22 cents. So that would cover in the first year.
So I am a believer in preserving our fund balance, so this helps, this kind of method of financing, we'll do that, and I suppose that's the reason you decided to go this route.
Right. So what we would be looking for in next year's budget would be to find $65,280, round up $85,000. That would be for a full year's payment, whereas this year, because of the timing of the installment loan, we would only have to have one payment, and we're covered right now.
And we will be being reimbursed by the fire departments that come in with us, so they will be, will enter into an agreement with each department where they'll be told, this is a dollar amount that you owe each year, and we'll receive that revenue from them. So we'll only be financing radios for county agencies.
And what the annual cost, and I'm sorry, I misspoke, the $465,000 is for the entire project. For the county's share, it would be $405,273.64. So we would only have to find a little over $5,000 to meet our debt service, because we would have the revenue coming in from the fire districts.
Next fiscal year. We budgeted $400,000 for this fiscal.
In this fiscal, 2018 year.
That's a good interest rate.
It is. Okay, I guess I need a motion to go into public hearing.
I also move.
All right, thank you, Bob.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll just start on this side. If there's anyone would like to speak to this.
I just, you know, thinking about how Motorola seems like every two or three years they're changing things, and you can't get parts for the old radios. I don't know if we've looked at leasing these radios, so when they do, we can trade in.
That's not a bad idea, I'm sure.
And like I say, I don't know, but I know they change them about every four or five years, something, and we turn around and have to spend a bunch of money on radios. So I don't know if that's been checked into, or if that's even a possibility, but...
Well, we did look at leasing options.
Right. We did look at a leasing option through Motorola, and the interest rate that we would have paid was greater than actually doing an installment loan.
Than actually borrowing the money.
When we, exactly, when we would own the radios and then we're at a trade-in situation, which is what we're doing with our purchases this year.
When you lease, you're paying for that, you know, that shorter amount of time that you'll have them, they're worth much more. The last radios that we bought en masse, we bought in 2008, so we've gotten a significant amount of life out of the radios that we have now. So it does cost, these radios during the term that we're paying on them will be covered. Maintenance and repair will all be under warranty, and the maintenance is factored into the $405,000.
For the lifetime.
That's what I was going to ask, because sometimes the lease, maintenance is included in the lease, but not in just a financing arrangement, sort of like a loan.
This, this will include maintenance, warranty, and repair.
All right. Barry, do you have?
The only thing I would say is, you know, if revenue's coming back from the fire department, especially EMMHolt, that they're not be allowed to have a fire tax increase to pay this money back. You know, they seem to know the things that need fire tax increases all the time. Just make sure that doesn't give them an excuse to raise the fire taxes to pay the money back.
All right.
Although we can do that.
No, they're bored. People have to be there to fuss about that one.
It's all the citizens and the fire business have a say-so.
Well, they have it. They have an opportunity.
They don't have any say-so.
Yeah.
They have no say-so. They can't even vote unless they're a member of the corporation, and, you know, at some point, it's going to happen. I mean, you know, people in the Patrick's are going to get tired of it, and they want to add, we need to have a vote again. But they don't, they really don't have to.
All right. Anybody else on this side? Not will move over here. All right, with that, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Thank you, Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So there are three items that I am asking the board to approve tonight. The first is to award the radio financing project to BBNT at the term of 2.6% interest rate over the course of seven years. There was a resolution prepared by our county attorney, I gave you an updated copy here. He just put a little bit more description concerning the project. The terms are from BBNT and have been reviewed by the county attorney.
That is a fixed rate?
Yes, sir.
It's 2.16, not 2.6.
Right, 2.16.
2.16%.
Yes, sir.
All right. Entertain a motion to move on that.
I'll make the motion. We accept that.
All right. Thank you, Bill.
A second.
Thank you.
Just one more question. So $3 million, I guess in the grand scheme of our overall budget, it's not real big, but is that going to affect our, our bond rating? I mean, I'm just thinking that we're going to have this, possibly having a big school bond, ACC bond or whatever coming up in the next year.
Actually, it's not, Commissioner Bird. I was looking at the LGC application that we submitted with the fiber radio project back in 2008, and our debt service at that point in time was about 89 million. On the application that I'm filling out today, our debt service at the end of 2018 would only be $50,408,087.
Debt service. What's our debt capacity?
Our debt capacity is 8% of our, of our total assessed valuation, and that, we are way below that. I think it's, it's in the annual audit, so I can give you that final number, but it's like 100 and...
Our legal debt margin is 998,456,000.
Yeah. So we are well below our debt margin.
We have one of the lowest, not that I'm encouraging debt.
No, I understand.
At all.
We understand.
But that's, with that said, we have one of the lowest per capita debt service of 24 counties that we're in a group of.
And we want to keep it that way.
I think there's only two below us.
That's good financial management. That's good financial management.
I would say so. Good conservative commissioners.
It is, yeah.
Well, you know, I'm a fiscally responsible progressive.
I just pick it each, Bob.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the financing on this? Say so, but saying no.
Aye.
And opposed, all right.
All right, and then a motion to approve the resolution approving the financing terms.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Bill, thank you, Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the last resolution that I need to have approved is the resolution that will authorize the county manager to file the application for the approval of the financing agreement as authorized under what Carolina statute 160A-20.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Thank you, Bill, Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Next, we will have another public hearing for some folks that are very interested in what we're going to do with our building on Graham Hotel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you may recall, I asked the board to call a public hearing, which we set for tonight, to consider the private sale of property to Alamance County Academy LLC. And Ms. Peterson has presented a glimpse of what her organization does. She also went into detail at our last meeting. She has agreed to provide office space to other nonprofits in the county, which frees up some of our office space. She's also agreed to let the county use some of that parking lot over there. We, what I looked at the statutes, and I think the best way to do this is to advertise for sealed bids, like we did with the Opportunities for Everyone building several years ago. If you choose to proceed with the sale, I have prepared a resolution in your packet, which lays out the details of it. What, what I would do is put an ad in the paper to run Thursday, October 19th. The 30 days for opening sealed bids would end on November 20th, 2017. At that time, that evening, we would open the bids up to 12:00 noon that day, and that evening I could report to the board the result of the bids. And then you could choose to accept it, reject it, or again advertise for additional bids.
What's the square footage of that building?
Uh, let's see.
Bodie's here, he probably knows it.
A little over 30,000 square feet.
Do you know Bodie?
I think it's 29,700 or something, total, based on the status. 29,770.
It was built in about six phases, though, starting in 1946. And therein lies the problem, with the cost of the roof and the things that need to be done in the building. And Ms. Peterson's group, another part of the consideration she brings to the table is the good work she does in the community, because this lady here takes care of young people that no one else wants to take care of. So she does good work, from what I've heard, and Susan Osborne as well. So I'd ask the board to consider that resolution.
So I have a question, and with all due respect to Ms. Peterman and Peterson, Peterson and her agency, there are other people that were interested in the building.
Yes.
And if we're going to have a process where we have sealed bid bids?
Yes.
The way, the way this is written, it almost, it seems like it's a foregone conclusion that we're going to sell it to the Alamance Academy, because the other parties who are interested aren't even mentioned in this resolution.
This, this resolution simply advertises it for sale. Anyone can bid on it.
Yeah, the resolution is putting it out for anybody that does have an interest.
So, so are the other parties, and the one I'm thinking of in particular is Piedmont Health Services, are they still interested in the building?
I haven't heard from them. They came and walked through the building, and Mr....
They're still interested, because they want to back money, look at it again.
So this...
This just opens it up, so that anybody in the community that would like a building can put their bid in and...
That's correct. It just advertises to the world that it is going to be open for bid. Anyone can bid on it.
Mr. Bird, right, it's a little confusing, because the resolution says Alamance County sale of real property to Alamance Academy LLC.
Yeah, that's kind of what...
And then the language for the whereas has to do with Alamance Academy?
Yes, the statute says that you have an offer, and you present it to the board, and then you advertise it for sealed bids. It's not a private sale.
So what you're saying is that we already have that offer, so now we go through this process to see if somebody else?
Through Alamance Academy. She, she's come forward with an offer. It's been communication with me now for three months, I guess. Got to know her pretty well, and she's serious about this, and that's why I said, okay, I'll put it before the board, and anyone can bid on it.
And she would have the fin, you would have the financing and the wherewithal to do what needs to be done to the building, and then have the ability to maintain the agency in perpetuity, as they say.
Yes, sir.
So, good.
And of course, the board makes the final decision.
Aye.
You may end up with six bids that you have to select, but as part of that consideration, you take a look at what she's already done in the community and make your decision.
I'm only asking from a fiduciary responsibility perspective. I appreciate the services that you provide and much needed in our community.
Yes.
Really, the only reason you put that name in, we could have had a, we could have said we're going to sell it, put it on the market, and similar to what we've done with Woody Drive.
But you have someone now that's serious about it. I haven't received a written offer, you know, there are two, there are two parties, two other parties have done that. But it's up to the board after the public hearing to decide whether you want to proceed.
How similar is this process in relation to the vocational rehabilitation or whatever we did?
O and E?
Yeah.
It's, it's almost exactly.
That's what I thought.
They came to us, they were in the building, they were operating it. Roof was leaking, air conditioning failed, heating had failed, and we were looking at a winter coming up, and the county didn't want to spend half a million dollars on a roof, and they couldn't borrow the money on the building.
Right, because they didn't have ownership.
So that's why we did this process. And no one else bid on that, I might add.
Okay, so there is interest on this and all, what you're asking. Well, we got a public hearing, so I guess we'll open the floor up again, if I can get a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
A second.
Thank you, Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll start on this side, we'll change it up a little.
I'm Mr. Henry Wyatt. I am one of the people with this peer support, the Alamance Academy.
Aye.
I have a very good, severe support person. Alamance Academy has really brought me a long ways. They are really good people, and Mo, as she said, you know, she, she sticks by her word, and I just want y'all to know that she has really helped a lot, a lot of people, not only me, but other people in the community. And I really do think this would be best for her.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side?
Just like asking.
Let me just say, everyone, this is my first time here.
Welcome.
And I want to speak on behalf of the organization. I got assigned to that committee, but it's a wonderful organization. I used to not talk to anyone, but it opened me up to not only show my artwork, that I, I was blind four years ago, and God healed me, and I had over 500 paintings. So I just now put them in the paper, so last week I published another article, and it is a benefit. It helped me to open up to the public when I shut down after the death of my mother. So it is a great organization, great peer workers, and they really helped me, and I am a living testimony, they, it really helped me.
Thank you.
So it is a privilege to hear this, and I could have spoken to the other lady here, because I just was talking to my pastor in Ghana, and I asked him to take me to the door of no return. And I told, I'm going to send her a video to let her see the whole thing of how it all started, okay?
Very good. Thank you. John.
Just a question, probably a client question. Do the builders have to be pre-qualified for the loan in order to do this, and if not, what happens with you guys if, if they can't get the financing?
Well, I got a quiet answer to that.
They acquire bond, 5% bond of their bid price. They get the finance, and they lose the bond, they lose the bid price, and we open it up for...
Bid again.
Thank you.
Or go to the second bidder, I get second highest. Yes, Susan.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to mention, so you'll know as you enter this process, how Alamance Academy interfaces with your local DSS. I think Mo has talked some about her Level 2 group home, but they're doing amazing work with young folks in our community, getting them to college. If you ever have the opportunity to attend one of Mo's graduation nights, where every child that leaves her facility has a plan for their future, unlike living on the street or aging out of foster care without a plan. On the other side, our work first area uses Mo. My staff, I ask them to write a few words, "community-focused and passionate" is how they describe Mo and the work. She works with substance abuse folks. If they don't have transportation, if they don't have Medicaid, Mo's staff goes and picks them up, gets them where they need to go. She's hired some of our work first participants herself, as they have graduated from their peer support training. She is a solid community provider in our community and wants to grow and works collaboratively with your social services.
Susan, and Mo, just for education on the money flow, can you tell a little bit where the money comes from to keep the operation going and...
I am, I'm contracted with Cardinal Innovations.
Right.
And also Alliance in Sand Hill, so I'm a Medicaid provider.
Okay, all right.
And so for Level 2 group care, she gets a rate from Medicaid.
Right.
Per night for the folks, and she keeps, as she mentioned, she's contracted with recatchment areas, so she doesn't have all Alamance County kids.
Right.
In her group home.
Anyone else? All right, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thanks, Bill. Thanks, Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
And now I guess we need to vote on, or put it up, see what the will of the board is to follow through with our resolution to put it on the market.
I move that we follow the processes outlined by our attorney.
I'll second that.
All right, thanks, Bob, Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Very good. Next on our agenda tonight, we have the library, Ms. N.J. Wilkinson.
Good evening, County Commissioners.
If I'm a friend of the library, I have to sign.
No, you get to sign that as the chair of the county commissioners. This week, starting this, yesterday is National Friends of the Library Week, and we want to recognize the importance that our friends play in the success of the library programs and, and the services that the library offers. We have a statewide recognized program, the Zoom Pass program, that they, we could not do without them, and it's been recognized with a state award. And so we have a proclamation, if you want to read it, to announce that it is national.
She knows how to read, too.
She has how to read better, huh?
Whereas Friends of the Alamance County Public Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. And whereas the work of the Friends highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. And whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries... And whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. And whereas the Friends gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Alamance County Commissioners proclaim October 15th through the 21st, 2017, as Friends of the Library Week in Alamance County, and urges everyone to recognize the Friends of Alamance County Public Libraries and thank them for all they do to make our public libraries and communities so much better.
Very good. I want to mention, last week I went on the tour of the graveyard that our library sponsored and put on. And they're actually going to Meven tomorrow night, I think.
Tomorrow is Meven, and then next Tuesday is Graham.
Went to Pine Hill and they talked to different folks that are laid to rest there. And there's a horse there that I didn't realize.
Horse.
From the Civil War, yes.
They do. The staff does a fine job of doing those, keeping the respect of being in a cemetery, but telling some interesting stories.
That's fun.
Glad you enjoyed it.
That was interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Next, Ray, if you will bring us up to date on the stretcher and Lucas device.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I've just got a brief presentation to share with you tonight. So basically tonight, I just want to do just kind of an overview of our EMS system, kind of how we're structured, and then talk about some of our recent statistics and call volumes, and then get into the lease request. So basically, Alamance County EMS provides all paramedic-level service to the citizens and visitors of Alamance County, as well as providing all non-emergency ambulance transportation in Alamance County. So if someone's in a nursing home, needs to get to a doctor's appointment, or is stretcher-bound, needs to get home from the hospital, we do that, as well as responding to all 911 requests for anybody that calls for an ambulance. And then we triage and transport patients to hospitals in Alamance as our primary transport location. But we also go into Guilford County, to Moses Call, Durham, to Duke, and Duke Regional, and the VA. And then Orange County, we transport to Chapel Hill for those folks that need that. So the way we're structured is we operate eight 24-hour paramedic-level ambulances. Three of those are stationed on East Crescent, Square Drive, and Graham. Three are on Boone Station in West Burlington. And then two are on North Graham Hope Dell Road in East Burlington. And we're going to be adding an additional 12-hour peak ambulance. It's going to be operating approximately noon to midnight. That was budgeted for this year, and we hope to add that in January. In addition, to help with the non-emergency and the convalescent calls, we do staff two non-emergency ambulances, Monday through Friday, for the hours of about nine to seven. And then for the outline areas in the community, so we can get rapid paramedic-level care to those folks, we operate what we call medic trucks. And these have a senior paramedic and a pickup truck that has all of our paramedic-level gear. And we have one of those in Meven, one at Altamahas, Be Fire, and then one at the Southern Base of Alamance Rescue on Belmont Mount Herman Road. So of course, our responses are augmented by local fire departments, law enforcement, and Alamance Rescue. We wouldn't be able to do it without our first responders, because they're able to get there a lot quicker than us sometimes and get that valuable life-saving aid going. And then Alamance County Rescue also helps us a lot. When we run out of ambulances, we'll ask them to come on standby and they'll provide an ambulance. And then we'll have one of our medic trucks make those folks paramedic-level when needed. So just an overview of our call volume. You can see the last four years here. With the current year being in blue, and you can see we've had consistent growth most months, with 2017 being more so. So we're growing. Some of the first months of the year, a little bit anomalous there. But, you know, the consistent trend is we're getting busier and busier.
Is that because we're getting older and older?
Talk about yourself, Bob.
Yeah.
And then I just wanted to point out the hourly call distribution. You see, we get a little bit slower during the night, and we really get busy during the day. So we're really trying to target those peak hours to add ambulances to try to be as efficient as we possibly can. And then some of our call locations, just to kind of show why all of our ambulances are based in the greater Burlington-Graham area.
I forgive me, I was offering some water.
You see our call distribution? There's lots of little dots on this map, out in the outer parts of the county. It shows our call volume. And you can see that on this heat map, how we really are busy in that greater Burlington-Graham and the ever-growing Meven area, which is why we have our ambulance currently located the way they are, all being in town. Just a review of some of our statistics. Our shoot times being about a minute and 24 seconds on average, so that's from the time the ambulance gets the call to the time they check in route, we're averaging a minute and 24 seconds. Response times, that's the call received. So whenever the call is received in CCOM and they start processing it, to the time we get a unit on scene makes up our response time. So any time it takes CCOM to process, and then it takes us to get in our vehicles and check in route, and then the drive time there, all makes up those components. So we try to watch all of those and keep those trimmed as we can. Our average response time is 12 minutes and 50 seconds. And 90% of the time, we get on scene in under 20 minutes. Obviously, for some of those outlined locations, it takes a little bit longer, and we're a little bit quicker in the more populated areas. Average turnaround time, when a unit gets to the hospital, it takes them about 23 minutes to get back in service. For the next call, we watch that, because we want to make sure that they're getting out just as quickly as they possibly can. And then a workload measure that we use in EMS called unit hour utilization. We're, and that measures the time that we're between dispatched and in service on a call. And we're on calls about 38% of the time. So this, you know, this does not include paperwork, it doesn't include driving back from the hospital, it doesn't include washing the trucks, checking them off, and any of those other things. That's just 38% of our day, we're between dispatched and in service on a call. So we're very, very busy.
Would you go to line two again, response times, and then go over that whole thing one time more?
Yes, sir. So we measure response times from the time the call rings in the center.
Right.
Downstairs, to the time we get on scene. So you really have three major segments there. You have that call processing time, then you have our ambulance shoot time, how long it takes us to get to the truck, and then you have the time it takes us to actually drive to get on scene. So that puts us averaging 12 minutes and 50 seconds. And then I've got a slide coming up that kind of shows how we compare against the rest of the state.
Alright, again, 12:50 to get defined that.
Yes, sir. Yes, it takes 12 minutes and 50 seconds on average for us to arrive, from the time they actually pick up the following call number.
And what's the under 2013 that you've got there?
That's our 90th percentile. So 90% of our calls, we're there in under 20 minutes.
That doesn't seem to compute. It seems like. Yeah, I can see why you're asking. So the average is under 13 seconds, but the 90th percentile is under.
13 minutes.
20, or minutes, but 90th percentile is under 20.
Correct. So we have a lot of really short, you know, really, really short times. And then we have a lot of, you know, longer response times. So that averages down to that 12-minute mark. But 90% of the time, we're there in under.
12.5.
In under 20 minutes. Does that make any sense?
Still doesn't feel intuitive.
No, I still, I'm confused.
So that's our 90.
I don't believe you.
You know, 90% of the time, we're under that minute, and then 10, or under that 20 minutes. And then 10% of the time, we're above.
Yeah. Do you feel that's the industry norm, as far as, and I'm not saying nobody's efficient, or not efficient, or that they are not. But is that the industry norm, you think, for a county our size with our population, and so on and so on?
We're pretty close. Let me see where I've got that. Here it is. So this is looking at, this is a state-produced graph that shows our average response time over on the left, compared to the state average, and then other urban groups. So Alamance County is classified as an urban EMS system. So there you can see, we're just at about that 13 and a half minute mark on this graph. And the state average for the urban groups is just under 14 minutes. So we're doing pretty well, holding our own. But I'm, you know, we've still got some more work to do. Getting that ninth truck on the road is going to help start to bring down some of these response times. And as we add resources in the future, that'll help as well.
So what would that 90th percentile comparison look like?
I did not put that graph in there, but we were pretty close to the urban.
Close to the urban on that side.
Yes, sir, yeah. And that 90th percentile is just an automatically computed number in our call software that we use. We enter in all of our times, all of our call data, and it automatically generates that 90th percentile number.
Maybe we're interpreting that 90th percentile wrong, because maybe it's like, the hundred, if you had the 100th, that would be the longest call.
Correct. And then 90%, 90% of the time, we're below that 20 minutes.
Well, I would hope so. I don't want to waste time there.
But if you're closer to a station, you're going to be less than 12.5.
Yeah, right, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It takes time to drive, obviously, yeah.
And, you know, like I said, we look from the time the phone rings, we don't just look at our drive time. We look at from the time the phone rings in CCOM. Because if you're calling 911, it really doesn't matter to you how long it took to drive versus how long it took them to do their stuff. So we look at that entire, entire segment when we measure. Since we're coming to ask for this lease, I did want to talk about our revenue, and just to show the efforts that we've made. You can see where we were back in October of last year. This is, this is what we're budgeted to do each month, and we raised our revenue goal for this year. So we raised it to about 370. And you can see that we're consistently over target. July was a little under, but we were over both in August and September. And we envision with some of the steps that we've taken, that we'll continue to see those revenue numbers grow. But I did just want to show that consistency.
While you're on that revenue, have our collections gotten better? Or I know we had an issue one time with collections, and people were having trouble with getting the right people to talk to you.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we've worked very hard on that. You know, we have a billing liaison in our office now that that's our sole focus, is tracking the numbers and being the, kind of that voice in Graham for people that need to come by that have issues. So we've worked very hard on that. And then I did want to go on an overview of our equipment request. So I kind of wanted to talk about what they were before I asked for them. So we are asking for nine striker power load systems and stretchers. And you can see there, one of our, that's our newest truck in Graham, has one. We currently have six on the road that we've bought in the past. And you can see how the stretcher just looks like it's holding itself out there. These systems will lift patients of upwards of 700 pounds. So the stretchers lift them up from the ground, and then we click them, you can't really see it well on the picture, but we click them into some antlers in the truck and press a button, and arms come up, grab the stretcher, the carriage comes up, and then we just push it in. So there's no lifting involved whatsoever. So it significantly reduces injury risk to patients and personnel, because it reduces the risk that we're going to miss something and accidentally drop and hurt somebody, as well as it prevents back injuries for our folks. And it also seems to significantly reduce employee fatigue and increases morale, which is very important as well. And then our Lucas devices, and that's what they look like. We are requesting three. We currently have one in service, and that's on our supervisor truck that stays in Graham. We want to put these three on our medic units with our senior paramedics and respond one of these to every cardiac arrest in the county. Like Spence said, they do increase the consistency in compressions. You know, once you put them on there, push the button, it compresses 102 beats per minute, it never gets tired, it never wavers, you never have to pause to switch out. And then it decreases the number of personnel needed on cardiac arrest calls. That's not to say that we don't still need our first responders to get there and get CPR going very quickly. But it does help to prevent us from having to send more than one ambulance and a quick-response vehicle on a call. There are some in some areas where sometimes we have to send two ambulances now, just because there may not be enough fire personnel to help us out at that given moment, depending on what other call volume's going on. So these really help. And then you can see in that picture, someone actually being transported from the, to the hospital with it going, and it's still doing perfect compressions, which is very hard for a human to do on a moving ambulance. So kind of the brass tacks of the request. We are requesting the Board of Commissioners to approve a four-year combined lease for striker power stretcher systems and physio Lucas compression devices. Both are owned by Stryker, so that's why we're asking for a joint lease. There are some further pending legal matters to be worked out by our attorney before the approval. So it would be approval pending the legalities being worked out. We're additionally requesting that Stryker be named a sole-source vendor. As I said earlier, we have six of those currently in place. So it helps to keep consistency on all of our units. And then Stryker is the only one that makes this particular kind. Furno has one out there, a power stretcher, but it operates totally differently, and it would be extremely confusing for our staff to be switching back and forth. And we've had really good service out of the Strykers so far. The total annual cost is $110,509.96. You can see the breakdown between the stretcher cost and the Lucas. For a total cost of $442,039.84, with the total cost of the stretchers being $384,528, and the Lucas being $57,510. And the annual cost of both of these were approved in our 2017-18 budgets. And with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you all may have.
I have a question. A couple of questions. So the total cost being $442,000. When I looked at the agreement, it didn't look like a lease, it looked more like a loan that is.
It's a lease with a $1.
It's a finance, we own the equipment. It's not like they own it and they're leasing it to us. We own the equipment.
Right, so it's a lease with a $1 purchase at the end.
Okay, I didn't see that in the agreement. So my question was, what if we just bought it outright? What would the cost be? And I guess that's another way of asking, what's the imputed interest rate that we're, that we're incurring as a result of paying for this over, it's really over a three-year period, not a four-year period? Because the first payment's right up front.
Right.
It's four payments. And I would ask the same question as I asked at the last, for the last purchases. Is it better to finance it, or just to take it out of fund balance and just pay for it?
Ray, the purchase of one of those Strykers, or for two of them, was for $75,000, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So to purchase them straight out, nine would be around $300,000. And then to purchase the Lucas, you're looking at an additional four, 500, I'm sorry, $54,816.
So on the, just the stretchers, we'd be paying like roughly $84,000, just in interest over the three years?
Pretty high interest rate, yeah.
Now, there might be other advantages of quote leasing if it includes a service arrangement that wouldn't be included if you purchased them outright for that amount, but.
It would result in the interest of $84,000.
Again, the benefit is, you know, we go through this, whenever we're trying to figure out the best deal to bring to the board. Traditionally, we've tried to stay away from committing too much fund balance, and we've committed more fund balance.
committed more fund balance this year in our budget than we have in a very long time.
That's a good point.
And we're looking at some expenses coming up next fiscal year, I think for animal shelter that are pretty large. So it's, those are things to bear in mind as you make these decisions. We can stretch this out over a couple of years. We will pay interest, but we stay out of fund balance. Or you can pay for it upfront, avoid the interest cost, but we are getting into our fund balance. I would, I would caution you that, you know, we have committed a lot this year in 17-18. We will more than likely spend fund balance this year and are looking at some, some big expenses in 18-19 that will take fund balance to do.
Well, those are good points.
And you said that this was allocated for in our budget for this year? So the money's already been set aside for it?
Yes, ma'am.
I got a question. Now, does this, this bid on a state contract, I know it's a lease, but how does that work? Help me out with that.
So the physio part is on a state contract, but the Stryker, because they're a sole source vendor, is not. So for the stretchers, they are not on any of the contracts, and that's part of the request tonight, is to have them designated as a sole source vendor. They are the only vendor out there that produces this type, and then we have six already in service. So in order to keep the consistency, which is all part of that.
So is that part of the legality that we need to?
Yes, we're asking you to approve buying from Stryker, since they're the only one that makes the same kind that we already have. And I think what Ray's trying to avoid is having to train his folks on how to operate different systems, if they can all know just the Stryker. But we have to have your permission to do that. The board has to say it's okay to only buy Stryker stretchers.
I think that's important. You don't want, you don't want any people to be trained on one and trained on the other, and you gotta cross train them. It's a headache, big headache.
It is, and it equals a lot of risk for patients, you know, and if a wrong button's pushed at the wrong time.
I guess the main question is the legality of it.
Everything to be the same.
It's okay then.
If you, if you, if the board approves this as a sole source, then it's legal. We can do it, it's fine. But it is an option you can do, and we would hope that you would consider that to keep it simple for our staff. And I think the Stryker folks are making a product that does the things that Ray and EMS need for it to do, too.
All right, now, on the Lucas, did I have an asset Lucas?
Yes, sir.
All right, we've only got one, right?
Correct.
Okay, how long have we had that one?
Uh, we got that one about last October.
All right, how many times has it been used, that you know of?
I don't have that number, but it's probably used, you know, five or six times a week. The supervisor can't respond to every cardiac arrest in Alamance County, but it, they stay busy getting it out to folks.
Okay, in a, in a, not necessarily a perfect world, but a, I'd rather have my druthers' world. What would be maybe not the ultimate, but better than just having four?
I mean, ideally, if we had them on every response vehicle that we had, you know, every ambulance and all of our medic units, that would be ideal. Because if, if a medic unit is on another call, then it's not gonna be available to where if you had one on every. But I feel like, at least initially, unless, you know, unless the board wants to go otherwise, that we'll be able to get them to most cardiac arrest calls, but I can't guarantee a response to every one, just because, like I said, a medic unit could be tied up on another call in their district when the cardiac arrest came out.
How many more would you need?
Well, we'll have nine paramedic-level units from January, so we have eight now. So we would need nine more to get them on every vehicle that we have.
Nine in addition to what you're requesting?
Yes, sir. Yes.
And to Mr. Joyce's point about the volunteer fire departments, that you need a lot more, we have a lot of volunteer fire departments, I think, right?
Yes, sir. So if, you know, if that was the stretcher, then, then you would want one at each. But I will say that there's, there are efficiency issues with using them. So you want, you want, part of the reason that I really like the medic unit structure that we have going now is that we'll have senior folks using, deploying these. And that's not to say that everybody can't be trained on them and everybody can't get proficient, but the fewer people that you have using them, the more proficient they'll be. Because one of the pitfalls of these automatic compression devices is deployment time once it gets there. So if you halt compressions because you're, you're focused on getting this going, then by the time you get it going, you've totally negated its function and, and, you know. So that's, that's part of the pitfall. And again, I'm not making the implication that we couldn't train everybody and get everybody proficient, right? But at least initially.
But doing high volumes is necessary to maintain proficiency. I mean, that's pretty standard in healthcare.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I do appreciate the stretcher issue with trying to prevent injury, especially to the personnel. I don't know how many nurses I know who are, have blown out their backs transferring patients. And I can imagine that for you all, it would be a very difficult thing, especially as Americans. We're told way more and more. Personal company accepted, I'm sure, but, yeah, I can see how being able to mechanically lift folks into the transport would be an important thing to protect your people.
Yes, ma'am.
Long-term, so they're not sixty-five years old and having constant back surgeries.
Yes, ma'am.
Which saves the county money.
That's right.
Since we are self-insured.
Well, I'm in favor of approving, I might just go ahead and make the motion to approve what's being recommended, but I'd also add that we just look ahead in future budgets just to evaluate the need to have more Lucas.
And, and that's definitely, definitely something we want to do. Once we get these deployed, we want to track how long it takes us to respond these to our cardiac arrest calls and to measure the, the survival rates and to see if it's gonna be necessary to expand our program. But we feel like this is a, a sound place to start, but it may not be where the program needs to, needs to be ultimately.
I like that approach, because you don't need to buy equipment just to buy equipment, make sure that it's being used in the right way. That's makes sense.
I'll cycle, it's your motion, Bob.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second. Any more questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None heard? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask a question? Legal question? If you, and you got the county attorney here, if you, if you just put these things in certain areas, are you entering yourself into a legal liability by providing better service in one area than you are in other areas?
I'm not an attorney, so I'm gonna let our attorney answer that.
You've got volunteer firemen that are much closer than the EMS. They're usually the first ones on the scene anyway.
What I'm saying is.
They're, they're your human Lucas device, and they'll save lives.
What I'm saying is, if you, if I'm, if I don't have the service of a Lucas machine because I don't live close to one, okay? Are you putting the county in a legal liability situation where I could come back and say, you are showing favoritism, or I paid the same tax money as this guy did? Are you putting yourself in a legal situation?
We have this thing called sovereign immunity.
Yeah.
I don't care, you get sued all the time, you lose all the time. But anyway.
All right, that's, to answer your question, Barry, we have one now, so, and we don't know where that truck is.
Really put yourself in a legal liability situation, Dave.
So hopefully in close proximity for you.
I think it's a fair question. In my healthcare experience, we would call that standard of care. Are we going to be providing the same standard of care throughout the whole community?
And the answer to that is, that's why we have volunteer firemen. And these are people in the community that are volunteering and training and taking CPR courses and maintaining the certification.
And that may, that may be the standard of care, given where the technology is and the ability to have it everywhere.
But the firemen are the ones that are asking for it.
Well, we'll consider that maybe in our next budget cycle, because these were already budgeted. All right, very good. Brian Baker, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. Here on behalf of the Recreation and Parks Commission to seek approval of a contract to do some grading on Saxwa Island. We are in the midst of building our park there. This will allow us to grade some of the pedestrian areas and the parking areas. So this is a bid, we took three bids on this project. This one came to fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. These funds are coming entirely from a grant from the North Carolina Recreational Trails Program. So there's no county funds at issue. We're just over the contract amount, so I need approval to get this worked out.
Any questions? I'll make a motion when we improve it, man.
I'll second it, but I'd like to ask a question. Do we ever consider whether or not contractors and people we do business with are minority-owned or not?
We do. We have a threshold of purchasing level, and we have to consider that.
That's right.
I think we have a policy about that, at the dollar threshold that this is, I'm not 100% sure about that. I can get that answer to you. I know we do when we reach a certain level of formal bidding, if we have to do minority-owned business solicitation.
Thank you.
All right, have a motion and a second. Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
No objection? Thank you, sir. Criminal court chiller replacement, Brian?
Hello, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So I'm here this evening to ask you to allocate money from fund balance. This is one of those unforeseen issues. We did know that the chiller at Criminal Court was in bad shape. It's over twenty years old, it's at the end of its useful life. But what I'm asking for tonight is you consider approving up to one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to come from the county's fund balance to replace this unit. Originally, we had the replacement of the chiller in our capital improvement plan, but it has recently experienced a breakdown and has forced us to have to move it up, to me being here tonight, asking for it to be replaced now. The chiller had a compressor that failed, and it's currently operating at half-capacity. It's the third compressor we've had fail in approximately five years. We could replace the compressor. The compressor costs about fifteen thousand dollars to replace, but we are at the end of the life of this chiller unit. And we estimate the chiller will take one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to replace. However we do it, we should be looking at another twenty years of life out of a new chiller. If we do it this time of year, we can avoid the extra cost that would come with having to rent, like a portable chiller unit to come in to keep the court cool. Plus, we would be able to plan the work. If we, if we wait till it breaks, it will guarantee break at a terrible time with some awful trial going on, and it'll be a real disaster. So aside from the fact that I am asking for one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to come from fund balance, we do feel like this would be the best, the best way to go. Just for your knowledge, talking with Susan, our current fund balance, this is an estimate. We haven't received our audit for 16-17 yet, but we are estimating our current fund balance to be over thirty-seven million dollars, which is 26% of fiscal year 16-17 expenses. So while I am recommending to you to be careful with fund balance, I do feel like this is a reasonable thing. And it is not budgeted, so this is a, a good reason to consider using it.
That's why we have fund balance. We're in our policies for 25%.
That's correct.
So we could, we'll probably still be above that. And, and we'll still probably be in good shape at the end of the year, even though what you just said a little while ago is that we're gonna be dipping in the, probably a little bit in the fund balance just to maintain our operations for the year.
That's correct.
What percentage is that?
Estimated 26%. We haven't received the audit for 16-17, but just looking over the numbers that we have from 16-17, unaudited, we'll, we should be at 26%.
Well, I would, I mean, that's twenty-year-old. I don't even know what, can they get the free on to charge it up when they get it, get the compressor in it?
It's like nine hundred dollars or?
Right, I mean, it's very expensive to keep them up once you do that, because they've changed all that, so.
I suppose a new compressor will be more energy efficient than what we have.
New chiller will, yeah.
I mean, a chiller, right?
Yes.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the request.
I'll cycle that.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Thanks, Bill. Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Thank you, sir. All right. Next, we have our county manager.
So this request is, is my recommendation to the board. I'm asking that the Commissioners consider creating a new fire inspector position in the Fire Marshal's Office to be effective December 1, 2017. This would be using funds inside the current Fire Marshal's Office budget. This would not take any new funding from fund balance. So what we have going on, we have a position that is currently in the Fire Marshal's Office, full-time position, is a chemical planner position. This, this position is actually paid for 100% by funds from the local emergency planning committee. This is a funding that comes from local industries to help pay for staff to be able to work with them, to help them plan how to properly store chemicals they keep on their properties, and also how to work with industry to do plans in the event something should happen on their properties. So that's, that's the main job of the chemical planner. It has been traditionally housed in the Fire Marshal's Office. The local emergency planning committee has in the past allowed this position to also help with fire inspections. So we were using this person to do planning with industry and fire inspections. Well, industry chemical regulations have changed, and in talking with the LEPC, this position needs to spend all of its time now, working with our industry in Alamance County, helping them properly plan for how to react to some incident on their property, and also to help them understand how industry has changed. That's, that's this position's real function. However, if we make that change, which we are going to make that change, that means this person will no longer be able to assist with fire inspections, which will leave the Fire Marshal's Office short for help with fire inspections, investigations, and being on call, because Fire Marshal's Office is also on call. So what I'm proposing to do is to take funds that are currently in the Fire Marshal's Office budget in this year and create a new full-time position of fire inspector. We do have part-time monies in the Fire Marshal's Office right now. They have used part-time in the past. I'm recommending to use all those part-time funds toward the new position, so there would no longer be any part-time monies available. It would all be in the new position. And then we would also use other funding in, in the Fire Marshal's Office budget that had been set aside for radio templates and maintenance that they no longer need, that they're not gonna need this year. The new fire, fire inspector position would have a salary of forty-three thousand dollars and would start December 1, 2017. It is important to understand that while we won't need new money to do it this year, this would become a position that would recur, so it would be something that we would incorporate into the budget next year. But I do feel like this is a good opportunity. The chemical planner position is empty right now. The person that had that position moved up, we had some turnover. So we're at a point where we need to hire for this position, and there's a difference between hiring somebody that can work with industry and do chemical planning as opposed to do fire inspector. It will help, it would help us clarify who we hire. So the timing is right, the position is vacant, we can do it without any new money, and I think it would be a good move. The, the chemical planner position would move to emergency management, so we have another LEPC-funded position that's in emergency management now. This would be a natural fit. It needs to go over to emergency management. So bottom line, I'm asking to be able to rearrange the Fire Marshal's funds to make this happen. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure Johnny Payne can answer any questions, too.
Well, you mentioned that it's, it would be a recurring position, so it wouldn't affect the budget this year, but it might next year?
It, it.
But it wouldn't unless you added back those part-time positions?
That's correct.
And whatever other unspent money that you're using this year, if you add those in the next year's budget, too.
That's correct.
So you could do it without adding any more incremental expense to the overall budget?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Does the city have chemical planners?
This is for the whole county.
Okay, so you cover all municipality, and so the more we gain industry, the more we need this, too.
I'll make a motion, we accept it.
Questions?
I'll second it. We do know that there are a lot of chemicals out there.
There are a lot of chemicals out there.
Disaster planning is very important.
We're very grateful, too, for the LEPC, for funding both of these positions, and they have been very supportive of the Fire Marshal's Office and emergency management, too, so.
Have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have Buddy Weitzel, sir. Make your report on the wood drive.
Good evening, Commissioners. I come before you to ask for y'all's approval of a contract with D.H. Griffin, Rakim, part of the to demolish 779 Woody Drive, the Old Peak Resources. This contract is for seven, seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars, which was approved in the July 17 board meeting of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand to demolish both Peak and the Training Center and the abatement of these buildings. So we would be just asking for a portion of that hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to demolish Peak.
D.H. Griffin has done a lot of the work for us in the past.
And we received seven bids on this job, and they were lowest. And we received seven bids on this job, and they were lowest, they ranged from
That was a big variance.
$249,000 to $79,000. Any questions?
All right, entertain a motion to move forward with that.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Amy.
Second.
Thank you, Bill, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We need a library budget revision for North Park Library, you got it?
It's time with numbers and they're not going to be decimal numbers.
She's low card catalog.
After we had gone through the budget process and the budget had been approved, I received word from Sanier Randolph with the City of Burlington, who heads up the community development block grant allocations, that they were cutting the amount of funding that they usually afford North Park out of the community development block grant. Traditionally, that spent $10,000 this year, and they were having to make cuts because there were federal cuts that were, there were cuts that were made on the federal level. And so we were at the bottom of their list of, for who was going to get those cuts. We were top of their list, I guess. So we actually, they cut our funding by $2,169, and we have, we did this anyway, we looked at our budget and how we wanted to spread that allocation out. And so what you have before you is how that $7,931 would be allocated for use at North Park. If you have any questions about any of that, I'll be happy to answer.
Well, it's too bad that you had to be put in that position to have to reduce for that particular location, but.
She assured me that we would not be at the bottom of the list next year, that somebody else would take the cuts next year rather than us. And to be fair, in 2014-15, they had extra funding and they gave us $4,000 extra dollars. So it washes out.
Well, as the Commissioner that serves on MJ's advisory board, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the request.
A second.
Okay, any questions, MJ? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, here none, thank you. All right, very good. County Manager's report.
I have an important thing I would like to take this opportunity to say publicly is how much we have appreciated the tax department's revow. They did a great job, we did the first quarter of 1718, and it has been, they just did a great job and wanted to recognize them publicly and say, all the departments, all county government appreciates the hard work they did.
All right, any Commissioner comments?
Yeah, I got a couple of related ones, but are these Lucas distributions going to be demographically driven as far as population? Where are you putting them? So forth.
Well, we'll have our supervisor that will respond in the greater Burlington and Graham areas. And then we're going to be putting them in our medic unit districts in Meven, one up north in the Altamah area, and then one down south.
They aren't spread across.
So what we're going to do is we're going to respond those while the ambulance go, and they'll also, and to reiterate what Mr. Albright said, you know, our reliance is still on the first responders to get there and get that, you know, hands-only CPR going very quickly. That's a very effective method, but then when the Lucas gets there, then that really saves a lot of labor getting it on there. So, you know, our effort is to get them on every cardiac arrest every time, but we're still going to be focusing on making sure that everybody's very proficient with their compressions.
I agree with Bob, I don't think there's any question that we're going to have to address this at budget time more. Second point is, I would like to request that we get a comparison, not that I want to do what everybody's doing or not doing, but, you know, we talk about our fund balance, you know, the policy and so forth. I think back years, when I was last on the board before I went off, I think Manning was our finance officer, he was telling us that our fund balance would be at 16%. And it's just, in my opinion, it's exploded. And at what level is it too high? And, you know, we had taxes raised five cents with the biggest portion of the distribution of that going to employee salaries was my understanding, and the rest of it went to fund balance, is my understanding. And what I would like to see is, look, we're in a group of 24 counties based on population. I think you've got your mega counties, and then you've got us in a group of about 24. State Treasurer's Office has this, and I think they could probably, we could figure out what percentages counties are at with our fund balance. And I like to see that, and I say whether. Again, just because one county's at 25 doesn't mean we got to be at 25, you know, it's. Yeah, I think you'd be surprised at how low some of them are percentile-wise, and they're progressive counties. A lot of the county's fund balances are, well, it's like Davidson, we went down to Davidson, you and I went down. That's how we talked about the performance management budgeting process. But if you remember when we were down there, we asked a question, I did, about them not lowering their tax rate at reevaluation. And he made some reference, that's why their fund balance had gotten up so high. And I said, well, they burned our courthouse down, we tried that. But, so I'd like to see that comparison. Now, third point, you mentioned the dog pound, the dog scenario. Can we get a report on where we're at with that, what our obligations are, what we've committed to, and is there? I mean, that was approved by a previous board.
Yes.
And I like to see the, because I have a lot of people ask me about it, you know, what are you doing?
I agree, Tim. We definitely need to look at that again.
Nothing's been done.
Yeah, it's true, and to hear that we're going to have to go into fund balance, take care of that, you know, on a project, it may be excessive, to say the least. I'd like to see what we got pending for that.
Sure.
And fourthly, and I don't really want to open up a can of worms, but you know, the Burlington, Alamance-Burlington school system is wanting to change their name. Bob, you're at all their meetings, and.
Amy is too.
Are you still going to them?
Yes, I am.
We're both attending them all.
They tell you what it's going to cost to do it.
Well, they addressed it at the last meeting, very little, just.
I don't believe that. You've got to change every, every piece of paper that's got their name on it, you've got to do everything.
Well, the way they explain, they wouldn't do that all at once, they would do it.
Yeah, but it still costs money. It's going to cost money to do it. I think it's stupid to do it.
Well, there's some positioning going on, and I believe it's a political motivation, and I have a problem with possibly somebody wanting to change the name who's not going to be here next year to start with. Burlington City Council's going to take this up tomorrow night, and it's my understanding that there's, that the majority of that board's opposed to the name change. And I have a problem with it because, in all honesty, I think Burlington, you know, I love Alamance County, but Burlington seems to add some, for the lack of better words, clout to the recognition of the system for good or bad reasons. But the legality of changing the name, I wish Clyde would address this. I had all of you, I've got a copy passed out to everybody about our school merger plan. And I wasn't on our board when this was approved, but I was there when they were discussing all this, and then I did get on the board.
That made me have to stall yours.
But the school merger plan clearly stated, it was one paragraph, said if the county Commissioners merged the school system, in other words, if the school systems merged themselves, they can negotiate everything they want. Name, makeup of the board, you name. You just had to, and even funding, per pupil funding. They could call all the shots. But if the Commissioners merged the board, the only prerequisite was that you had to take the school system, the new one, to the highest level of the per pupil funding of the two or three, which in this case is two systems, and Burlington was the highest of the two as far as per pupil.
That's exactly the way it was.
So, in all honesty, it was going to cost about $4 million to eventually pull the two together over a course of years, but a total inclusion of $4 million. Okay, they clearly were not to name themselves. And there were minutes of meetings on this board here, I think Ricky Morfield was here, Larry Sharp, Frank Bennett, Kerry already, and I believe Junior T. There were clearly negotiations that were kicked back into their land for them to talk it out to where everybody would be happy, but the county Commissioners technically named that system. By the resolution, they technically named it. It says in here that the system will be named this, the school board will be named this. And it's my belief that, you know, to, how are they going to legally get by this if they named and changed their names themselves? Don't they have to either get our approval to go against what the merger plan was, or get the state legislature to overrule or? Because there's no sunshine on this, I wouldn't think.
The only statute I've found on that one since ever, C-67, and it talks about how school systems are merged. And the merger plan is the title of this section of the law. And the first thing on the merger plan is the name by which the merged school system shall be identified in that. And then it goes into other items that talk about how that takes place in a public hearing. It was brought to the county Commissioners, county Commissioners approved it. Then it went to the State Board of Education, making the last minute of the minutes. Commissioner Morfield said, instruct the clerk to send this to the State Board of Education for approval, and the State Board approved it. So the statute, 115 C-67, in my view is pretty clear. It says if you want to change the name for any part of that merger plan, you can't do it unless the General Assembly approves it.
So it would take local legislation?
It'd have to be an act of the General Assembly in the form of a local bill to change the name of the school system.
So they talked about that at the last school board meeting, and I think that's what I heard them say.
So what are you saying, we've got to change it here or the state helps?
It would have to be a local bill. Someone would have to release the local legislature to produce a local bill to change it. And they would have to gather enough support to pass to be signed into law.
So this isn't something that requires a referendum or something from the county Commissioners?
We, yeah.
Well, we could pass a resolution.
That we don't want it?
That we don't want it changed. And our legislators.
Want to make the motion, Tim?
Well, thank you. Bill and I have not talked about this, I promise you we haven't, all right? Everybody believes we've talked.
I haven't heard anything on that.
No, I hadn't talked to you about it at all. But our local legislators would have a hard time going against what two key boards might say we don't want you to do. And, because to my understanding, Burlington does not want to see it changed. Yeah, Burlington, did David Huffman call you today?
I spoke to the county attorney, a very frantic county attorney, Rick Paul came in here. I don't know what Burlington would do.
We'll find out in a day.
I shared the statute.
Should we, I know Bill made a motion, but.
No, I didn't, I didn't make a motion.
I don't think we ought to be making a motion.
I was going to say, I think we need to take this up at a meeting.
Yes.
You want to have it on the agenda?
It should be on an agenda, because I think that one of the things that I can see is that the people who live in Burlington get to go to the Burlington City Council and say what they think about it. I think the people of Alamance County should be able to come to their county Commissioners and say what they think about it.
Right, I think.
And I kind of, I also want to say that you threw in there that, where you mentioned that it added Burlington's clout to the school system. As a graduate of the Western Alamance High School class of 1985 and the Alamance County school system, I think it had enough clout on its own and did not.
I wasn't demeaning Alamance former school system, but I'm certainly going to demean Burlington's.
I'm not either.
Because jointly, they are quite a, it's quite a machine, but it needs to be better.
It's in the top 15% of the size of school systems across the country. It is a big organization.
I mean, if that is something we as a board want to put on the agenda, that's fine, we can do that at our next meeting.
Well, we can see what Burlington does, right?
Yeah, that's.
I mean, tomorrow night.
I also want to say briefly, I think that it's important to recognize that this, really, it's the school board's job to decide what the school system is. And under the way the statutes are presented to us, that if people have an opinion about that, they should lobby the school board and talk to them about what they think about it.
We are going to have a hearing about it.
I don't want to, you know.
Well, if it hadn't have been part of the merger process, if it had been two systems that hadn't been merged, or two systems that merged themselves, I agree, we wouldn't have a dog and fight too much. But I'm going on the spirit of the law. I was going on the spirit of the law when the merger took place. When I went down to Raleigh, I collected everything I could. I had to pay $25 to get the minutes of the meeting. I asked for the tapes, and Chuck Kitchen said, I'm not going to give them to you, he's going to charge me $25. I paid that $25. I had the minutes transcribed, then I got the minutes from the school board. They violated the spirit of the law.
And it looks like it was three votes.
Well, it was three votes here to go on a merger, to merge them. But the point, I'm a stickler for the details on the merger process. The merger process, the spirit of the law was violated, in my opinion. And I even went down to the state legislature and took everything that I had to a lawyer, one of the lawyers in the legislature, and she told me, I said, here's the statute, here's what their board did, this is what our board did. Do you not see a violation? She said, basically, she said, if there was a different governor and a different lieutenant governor, who was on the state school board at that time, Jim, not Jim, but what's his name, not Wicker?
Dennis.
Dennis Wicker, yeah. That I would be correct if there was a different school board and a different, I mean, a different governor and a different lieutenant governor. And I said, well, isn't that odd that the truth differs based on who's in office? And she just looked at me like, well, yeah, that's why we do things. And, but the point is, is the county Commissioners told them what their name was to be, school board and school system, and to go thinking they don't need our input now is, in my opinion, again, a breaking of the spirit of the process. That's just my personal opinion.
It would be an act, your delegation would be the one that would do this.
Well, what we'll do is just see how, like you say, see how the public hearing for the school system, and also see what Burlington has at their meeting tomorrow night, and we'll move from there.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments in response to Commissioner Sutton. I think it's a good idea to look at our fund balance and the fund balances of counties of similar size. In 2015, when we decided to up the fund balance, and maybe again in 2016, I'm not sure, we were advised by our auditor that the median, or the mean, I forget which one, fund balance of that comparative group was at, it was a little over 25%. And so we came up with 25%. And I know in my own personal experience, where I used to work, we maintained, they called it something else, but it was essentially the fund balance of something like 44% or somewhere in that neighborhood. I know I served on the park board, they have a fund balance that's up there. I forget whether it is 25 or 30%. I talked to David Cheek, City of Meven, they're way up there. There's some rationale, and because of the fund balance policy and the achievement of fund balance, it caused our bond rating to go from a AA minus to a AA. But, you know, I think it's great to look at it again, and, but, there's another point there. What was the next thing that you mentioned after fund balance?
Yeah, animal shelter.
Yeah, so, and we'll find out for sure, but my recollection is, is that we came up with a deal with the City of Burlington that we were going, that we agreed to a certain amount, and that was it.
Right.
So anything in excess of that was going to be borne by the City of Burlington. And other municipalities, some may or some may not have participated in that type of expense.
I mean, also.
But our liability was limited to a set amount.
But I'm guessing you're going to have a meeting with Harden and.
Yes, yes, well, I'll have an update for you next day or so.
Okay.
I have a little comment about the fund balance. I think it's important to remember that the way that you think about, you want three months of savings to cover you in the event of a disaster or something like that. 12 months in the year, 8% is to pay the payroll for one month. So I believe that the reason that we think about a 24% fund balance is to cover the county's expenses for three months, three times age 24, in case of a disaster, fire. You know, terrible things have been happening, seemed like left and right since the eclipse, you know, so.
Actually, three months would be one. Actually, three months would be one-fourth of 12 months or 25%.
Right, so 24, 25%. And I think that's good to remember that, you know, that those numbers aren't just pulled out of the air, that they're related to a financial principle. And Dave Ramsey says for household financial budgeting, you should have six months of, six months, three to six months of your family's expenses saved in case somebody loses their job or is seriously injured and can't work or something. So that's how I approach the question of how big the fund balance should be as a matter of planning for disaster and.
Or children's going out or.
I know I was going to say, Tim, that five cent tax increase, about two-thirds, maybe a little less, went to fund the budget request for the school system and most of that went to teacher pay supplements. And then the other third or a little bit more went to our own staff wage and classification plan. And about taxing, yes, you could lower our tax rate temporarily if we decided to lower our fund balance, or you can increase the tax rate temporarily to achieve a fund balance. But once that balances whatever it is that you want to achieve, then it really doesn't have any impact on your tax rate. It's not like it's going to be a recurring tax rate to raise the fund balance forever and ever. Once it's raised, then you're done.
Well, you get different commentaries on what you think's efficient and what's excessive. Back when it was 16% and we had the windfall of about $4 million more dollars, took it up to 16, everybody thought, well, that's nice, that's double what the state's suggesting, which is 8%.
Well, that's not suggested fund balance, that's the very minimum low which you start getting nasty letters.
No, well, you get, yeah, you get your letters, but it's not mandated, it's not mandated that it be at 8%.
That's one month.
There's a big difference of, well, I'm not going to get into debating a whole lot more right now, but bottom line is, that's not mandated, that is suggested.
I think that's a good idea to get some data and let's look at it.
Yeah, I agree.
I like that. Brian had actually mentioned something about upgrading our cameras and stuff and he and I talked this week and I told him I'd just bring this up in our Commissioner comments that I thought there is a room next door that will seat 135 people and if we updated, possible, look at that to where everybody can join us in our meetings. Looking at what he sent out, very few meetings ever go over that.
So you're suggesting move the commissioners' meetings to the.
To the back room and seat 135 people, so.
I think that's a good idea.
That's an option that we can look into.
Our average meeting attendance over the past year has been 67 folks, which this room's rated for 49. As I said in the information I gave you, we're preparing this year and have budgeted this year to do camera replacements and some technological updates in here. We just wanted to check with the board to make sure before we do that, you know, is this really where we want to be? Had suggested here of the historic courthouse and I thought about the other room, the overflow room itself, but that's a very viable option too. But that is up to the board.
Would that be less expensive to outfit that room as opposed to the historic courthouse?
I think we would be able to do it for, hopefully close to what we budgeted to do this room. There's significant work that we would need to do at the historic courthouse, not, you know, we would use the money we have budgeted now to help with that project. You know, we have not talked to the court about the overflow room, the civil courtroom. So we would want to do that for sure. We had talked to them about historic, but we will, if, you know, if the board is interested in that, no need to vote if there's a consensus.
That's why I brought it up.
Let me be sure I understand what we're talking about. We're talking about having all our meetings in there, the nine o'clock and the whole Monday morning ones. And don't they have court at 9:30?
Well, and we may could flip them if we had to back to here on the morning, but we have to talk to the courts.
Yes, we would have to check with them to see how feasible would it be to try to have morning and evenings there. And even if we're only able, if that's what the board wants to do, if we're only able to have evenings there, there may be some mornings we could schedule it with them if they know their court schedule, which they usually do. But, you know, our thing was just to make sure we're doing what you want us to do as we make improvements to the space. If the board is, if there's a consensus that you're interested in us contacting the court about the overflow space, we will do that and see what schedule would look like. We can come back and report if you'd like.
It accomplishes, I think, what we're after to accommodate pretty much everybody that shows up to our meetings. Only one time a year normally that we exceed that limit.
I guess, yeah, we could ask them about it. I guess I'm a little confused about, so we would have this space refitted for the technology that we're talking about doing.
Well, I mean, they would probably mislead what they have here and we'd operate on it the best.
If the board was interested in going into overflow as the all-time meeting place, day and night, we would talk to the court and if that could work, we would only make updates in the overflow space. We wouldn't do anything else in here. I think we might relocate some of this equipment maybe, but everything would be invested in that space. If we were told that we couldn't always get that room, because the daytime meeting will be an issue because they do use the courtroom. If we can't work it out, then we would look at, could we make some investment there and maybe some minimal investment here if this is just going to be used for mornings? That was not an option that we had considered, was using this other room, so we haven't looked at it as we had looked at the historic courthouse. But we can do that if the board's interested, we'll be happy to look at it.
I just came in the other day and I couldn't remember how many folks it sat, but it's 135.
Yes.
I never heard us ask people questions about stuff. Find out.
Everybody okay? Let me bring that back as a proposition of, can it be done or will it, you know, will it be something we'd be interested in?
Okay, we will. Bye.
All right, very good. Anything else? Hearing none? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you for watching the Alamance County Commissioners' Meeting. Meetings of the Commissioners' Board occur on the first and third Monday of each month in the Commissioners' Chambers at the County Office Building at 124 West Elm Street in Graham. Typically, the first meeting of the month is at 9:00 a.m. and the second meeting of the month is at 7:00 p.m. Changes to the meeting schedule will be posted on the county website at www.alamance-nc.com. The video of this meeting is broadcast on Time Warner's Public Access Channel on the second and fourth Wednesday of each month at 10:00 p.m. You can also access this meeting through our website at www.alamance-nc.com. Please visit our website for more information about watching meetings online. For technical questions regarding this meeting's online or television broadcast, please contact our county webmaster at webmaster@alamance-nc.com. Please note that this address is for technical questions only. Questions regarding the content of Commissioners' Meetings may be made to the Commissioners themselves. You can find their contact information at the county website at www.alamance-nc.com. Click on the link that says County Commissioners to learn more about our Commissioners, read minutes of past meetings, access agendas and find other information about the County Commissioners. You can send mail correspondence to the Commissioners by sending it to the Alamance County Commissioners, 124 West Elm Street, Graham, North Carolina 27253. Again, thank you for tuning in to the Alamance County Commissioners' Meeting.